Good evening. This meeting will be called to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. On a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
Here.
Mrs. Fappell.
Here.
Welcome back. Mr. Stotts.
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Tebby emailed he will be late. Mrs. Marmian.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Butchko.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, there is no executive session at this time. So we're going to move into the presentations. We're going to start with Ms. Bolden with the SSDS report and the HIV Self-Assessment Report.
Hello. The SSDS report is actually the second report. So this goes from January of last year through June of last school year. We had a total of six investigations completed. Three were alleged and did not meet the definition of bullying. Three were confirmed and they did meet the definition of bullying. We had zero incidents leading to removal, zero restraints. Our trainings were the A to Z equity trainings that we did the second half of the year. So all staff did, God bless you, all staff members did modules one through four. And then our Equity Committee did modules four, five and six, and then seven and eight another month. The programs that aligned to this initiative were Random Acts of Kindness, Read Across America Week, SEL Week, Neurodiversity Celebration Week. We did six months of our Character Strong Purposeful People program implementation, and we also implemented our school-wide character program HAWKS. That's it for SSDS. This is called the HIV Self-Assessment Report. So this report grades us on how well we are meeting all the requirements included in the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. In this report, there are 26 total areas to score on a scale from zero to three. Zero meaning we do not meet, and three is actually exceeding the requirements. So in eight of the areas, we are meeting the requirements for a total of 16 points. And in 18 of the areas, we are exceeding the requirements for a total of 54 points. So we end up with a 70 out of 78 points, which is like a 90%. And I've said this before, it's kind of hard to get to that 100% because we'd have to be like super students and exceeding in every area. I'll give you some examples of where we are exceeding the requirements. Our safety team meets more than twice per year, and we do identify patterns in the reports that we receive for harassment, intimidation and bullying. Vivian is our anti-bullying specialist, so we meet more than twice a year, more than likely four times a day. So, you know, that's an easy one to exceed. Investigations are always completed within the 10 days. Parents are always notified on time. We provide our staff training that's required every year. And we implement our SEL program throughout the entire year, which is Character Strong Purposeful People. That's aligned to our SEL curriculum and the standards. So areas of where we're just meeting and we're not quite exceeding yet would be, we do have an established SEL curriculum, but we did not include like outside groups in adopting that, such as law enforcement. So you kind of have to do that in order to score those points. We have HIV programs as required, but we don't make them a part of our staff evaluations at this point. We evaluate more of the instructional end of our staff. We identify patterns, but we haven't provided parent programs yet. That's something we could add in to score a couple of points. Policy is discussed yearly, but we haven't really discussed policy again at the parent level or anything outside of our school district. And then our safety team provides, I mean, they don't provide training. They receive the training, but if you were to provide certain training by like a licensed health professional, you would get extra points. We get training, but it isn't by licensed health professional. And then this year, we are going to try to score another point in the area of assessing school climate. So we're going to do a student survey. We didn't do that last year, so we didn't get the points, but that's where we're going to try to get this 70 to maybe a 71 for next year by doing a student survey. So we discussed that already at our first school climate team meeting, which was just last week. And we have some ideas for that. So again, 90%, not too shabby. Any questions on that report? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to 3.03. This is the district test report. And I'm just going to step aside so we can focus on the screen.
All right. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present the Oakland District Test Report for the 2023-2024 school Last year, the Oakland School District gave several state test assessments from the access to DLM and the NJSLA. Tonight, I'm going to go over the purpose of those tests, talk about performance levels, and share some student results. There is a, I need to do a brief explanation of an NJDOE regulation. And I'll also go into some results for student groups. The NSAS reporting, this is that regulation I was just speaking about. Basically, what it says is that student data cannot be presented unless there are 10 or more students in the group. So some of the, as we see through this presentation, there are some groups that were below 10, so I couldn't share that information, or I won't be able to share that information. So what is the access test? The access test is for our multilingual learners, formerly known as ELL students. Basically, it's a test that is given for ML students from K to 12. And the purpose is really just to test their English language progress. And it's in four areas, which is speaking, listening, reading, and writing. The DLM assessment is for those students who are significantly intellectual, sorry, have significant intellectual disabilities. It's a test that goes from English Language Arts, Math, and Science. It's basically a replacement test for the NJTPA, which is when your students take it in high school. That's what that test is, and then the NJSLA. The way that this test is done is that the classroom teacher actually gives a test one-on-one with each of his students. They do it in small bite-sized pieces, and they're called testlets. Both of these tests, due to the small number of students that we have here, unfortunately, I cannot share that information. So now on to the NJSLA. The NJSLA is a test for math, language arts, and science. In language arts and math, students are tested from grades three through nine. For science, we do grades five, eight, and 11. And then for math, when they get to the upper grades in high school, they kind of change names. They call it like N-of-Course tests, but it's basically students who in high school will take an Algebra I, geometry, or an Algebra II test. For the science NJSLA, they have four performance levels. We want our students to be in Level 3 and Level 4, which is proficient, advanced proficient. To do that, we would be, a student would need to score a 200. All right, so this is the results from last year's science test. What is highlighted shows you the state average from last year and the average that we scored, sorry, the percent proficiency of our students. Oakland was a little below state average, but I do want to point out that if you look at from 2022 to 2023 and then last year, I mean, we see nice growth with our kids. So that's, I think, almost more important than that we didn't make state average for last year. In terms of some student groups, this is the, how the females, the males performed. There really wasn't much difference between the two. If the table on the right, that number is for the number of students who were proficient or advanced proficient. So for the student group of ethnicity and race, here's an example where I couldn't show results for the Hispanic and Black population because we don't have more than 10 students here. But it does show the proficiency of the white population. For students who are economically disadvantaged and who are not economically disadvantaged, here's the chart and table for that information. And finally, for special education students, again, students with IEPs, I wasn't able to show the information because you have less than 10, but students without IEPs, the passing proficiency percentage is shown. Moving on to the language arts and math NJSLA. Here, we see five performance levels. We want our students to be in Level 4 and Level 5. To do that, we need to, they need to have a score of 750 or more. Basically, what it says is if a student is in Level 4 or 5, then they're prepared for their next year's math or language arts class. So this is the language arts, last year's scores. And again, highlighted so you can focus on the state average and our passing proficiency. And Oakland did a really nice job with the language arts. As you can see, for grades three, four, and five, each of those grade levels, the proficiency of Oakland students surpasses that of New Jersey. Moving on to some of the language arts student groups. Here is gender. The green shows the female proficiency percentage, and the orange, brown is for male. Again, the table on the right shows the number of students who have attained proficiency. This chart and table shows, again, the ethnicity and race. Again, I can only show you the percentage of white students in grades three, four, This is for students who are economically disadvantaged. I do want to point out that for grade three, that is not like, that is not a zero students passing, that is just we didn't have more than 10. And again, here is students with IEPs. I can only show the percentage of students who pass who do not have an IP. All right, so this is the NJSLA math score comparison. As you look at New Jersey compared to how Oakland did, here Oakland did struggle quite a bit. We were below state average, and here is an area that we know that we need to focus on for this upcoming year. Again, here is the student group of gender. For math, here is the, showing the proficiency. For ethnicity and race, again, you can only do the white students. This table and chart shows students who are, in this case, who are not economically disadvantaged. And the chart here shows students who do not have an IP, their percent of meeting or exceeding expectations or being proficient. As this presentation will go on your website, there are links on here if anybody, if anybody who looks at it wants to find more information about any of those three tests. And thank you for your attention. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. On the ELA, I'm looking for it, hold on. On grade level four, there's a very wide swing between male and female, where everything else showed consistency. Is there any reason for that? So go down a page? Yeah, there.
This one?
So grade four, 75% male, and grade, grade four, 44% female, where the other third and fifth grade are like kind of the opposite.
I would have to look more closely into, and I can look more closely into that group of students. I don't really have any.
Okay.
Right, it is a percentage, so you.
10 females, 12 males. There's only two difference, and it's a 30% difference. It's probably math. Like that, like, how many are in the whole class?
There's probably less boys.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say.
The other thing we have to also remember is that due to the size of the Oakland District, every child really is a pretty big swing in terms of percentage. So, and when we looked at more individual data, we saw a lot of students who were in the, like, just below the 750, which would be the passing, so the approaching section. So like I said, a lot of the students were like just there, probably missed it by maybe like one or two questions, that's it.
Winter, can you go back to the math forward, I guess, to the math? That one?
This one?
Yeah. That abysmal is probably not the right word, but we're so far below the state average in third grade, it seems, seems we're missing something. What, I know you're just compiling the numbers, maybe, maybe you're not the guy I should be asking, but why the big difference? Why are we so far below the state average? And why are we regressing? That, that grade level is regressing every year.
I'm going to just chime in real fast because we did have a good discussion in the Curriculum Committee this week about this. And I do know that Ms. Bolden and Meredith were working on some tools to help the teachers better identify the students that need help. So they are going to be switching their assessment tool for the middle of the year. I looked more at the fourth grade total, where it went from 50% to 28%. However, we do have to realize the small number of students that those percentages represent. So it could be kind of like we just saw in the previous example, a few students. Encouraging, though, is that the fifth grade actually did go improve from last year. So does seem to be going on like a wavelength.
So we also want to make sure that we're looking at the same group of kids. And so if you go to third grade in 2022, they were at 38%. That same cohort moved to fourth grade in 2023 and moved up to 50%. And then that cohort moved again in 2024. And so if you're looking at students over time, that's a better indicator. And so in terms of the total number of students, because of the small size, the difference that two kids makes could be a huge jump or drop. And so what we're going to be looking at is the actual breakdown in terms of the actual number of students. And so what we want to make sure is year over year, we're seeing increases in total number of students that are proficient, even if the percentages are highly variable.
But it's not two students because.
No, I'm just giving you an example. It is.
It's about nine.
Yeah, it can't be two students.
Like, when I look at that, and if I assume, and this is anecdotal, I don't know that it's 40 students, but in 2023 in the fourth grade, 20 of them were doing it. They were proficient. And now it's 28%, so that's 11 of them. That's a delta of nine students. So I understand our N is smaller, we have a smaller sample size, but we're not talking about like a few. I feel like that's a big number.
Our number one priority as it relates to this upcoming year in terms of the School Acceleration Plan for Oakland is math, paired with science. Science has been a challenge for all districts across the state, simply because in elementary, there are not really good curriculum tools, and there hasn't been an emphasis because everybody's focused on reading first, math second, science third. And so we're prioritizing math, and we're going to be embedding and looking at new tools for science.
Yeah, that, you know, we seem to be changing curriculum periodically. We come up with one of these things and we say, oh, we're going to try something different. Maybe we should keep the same thing for a couple of years. Maybe we're floundering from one thing to another, and none of it's working.
So I hear what you're saying, but one of the challenges is that some of the tools that are being used, there's not interrelated reliability between what the state is assessing and then the curriculum and the tools that are available. And so students in their benchmark assessments are doing, are making progress. That doesn't necessarily line up with the state assessment. And so at the beginning of the school year, we're looking to baseline where are our students so that we can measure specific growth over time. And we're looking, we're constantly looking for tools that are better aligned with how they would be assessed by the state at the end of the year, which is why we're having some of these. And so we're digging deeper into some of our screeners at the beginning, so teachers understand where to begin with students, so that they're not spending time on things that kids already know, and looking at how do you target specific skills for specific students so that we're also not wasting time covering material that they've already mastered. And so it's a fine balance, but our core focus for 2425 is math.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, but I'm disappointed. You know, if we know what the state's assessing, what, not subjects, but what areas of a subject, what areas of math the state is assessing, why aren't we stressing those areas of math? We're over here doing our own thing, and we're saying, yeah, the kids are learning, and maybe they are, but the state doesn't know that. And all these people that read the newspaper don't know that. We've got to do something better, consistently better, not, not changing every year.
Meredith, you want to answer that?
Can I just talk loud? You don't make a phone call.
You need to come to my, come to my phone.
Yeah, you got to get people at home that are.
You're a teacher, you can talk loud.
I can talk loud. A couple, so I appreciate the question, and it gets a fair and valid one, and want to just say what we are already in the process of doing, having analyzed this data over the last several weeks, and what action we're already taking to immediately address. You know, there's growth needing on the literacy side as well, but to speak to this, you know, more pressing area of urgency. So first and foremost, as Dr. McDowell was saying a few moments ago, Principal Bolden and I have had extended conversations about the tool we use to determine where kids are at presently, what their present strengths are, what their present areas of need are. The tool that we have been using for the last several years, it's aligned to our math curriculum, has proven to be unhelpful, if I'm being polite in public, in a public setting here, unhelpful and not predictive of their performance on a state standardized test. And so we've already put in motion, training happened on Monday of. Was that yesterday? Training happened on Monday of this week to implement a new universal screener in grades third, fourth, and fifth here in Oakland. It's called NWEAMAP. Eight million students across the country, do I have that number right? Eight million students across the country participate in this test, and it's incredibly reliable data comparative from peer to peer, as well as predictive of kids' performance on a state test like NJSLA, or as they get older, SAT or ACT and things of that nature. So that's already in motion because we agree that we need to have a better awareness of what kids can do at the start of the year so that teachers, leaders, staff can align their supports. In addition to that, we are setting in Oakland and all the schools that we serve key performance indicators at the start of the year so that we can get really zoomed in, really close look in the weeds at individual kids and know what their present strengths are and how close or far they are to that proficiency bar. So that when we set goals and we work with our leaders and we work with staff to align supports and resources, we're thinking about what, what kids are closest to that proficiency bar, and what do they need in terms of skills and standards and support to get over that bar next year? Who are the closest? And who are kids who are on a multi-year journey to make progress year over year? And ultimately, in perhaps two years or three years, we're talking about those kids meeting or exceeding a proficiency bar. And so we've put that measure in place as a, like an area of focus in my work with Principal Bolden and all the principals to help to really zoom in and really align our support. Lastly, and perhaps just equally as important of all of that, is time in classrooms. So we've already visited some of the upper elementary math classrooms in our work together, and we'll continue to do so, right? Because we can look at all the numbers and look at stuff on paper and think about the strategy, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the work that happens in the classroom between the teacher and the kids. And so we're going to continually support and monitor and look for ways that we can continue to strengthen that as well. Those are three or four key actions that are already in motion that I am very confident will continue to move the needle forward in this regard.
Okay, I hope you're right, because we see this every year. And the results are similar every year with anomaly, here and there, to 50% is an anomaly. But, and we go through the same thing. You know, we're going to do this, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, but it doesn't work. None of it seems to work. And I know this isn't your fault because you just started, but next year, I'm going to yell at you again.
Okay. We're all in this together, and I feel very confident in this approach. And I believe next August, when the data is available, we'll have great news to share.
Good job. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on it? So the training that was done yesterday, that was to utilize a new assessment as opposed to the unhelpful one? So if the training was yesterday for the teaching staff, when would that be presented to the children? Like, is it for this year, or is it to get a head start?
So they'll take a, sorry, just to half-answer your question, if I, at some point in the next two to three weeks, students will take a beginning of. Typically, if we had implemented this in the normal kind of course of action, they would have taken a beginning of the year baseline assessment in the first two or three weeks of September, a mid-year and an end-of-year assessment. Our timeline will be a little bit compressed this year because of our later implementation. So they will take some time either at the very end of October or early November, their baseline assessment, and then a mid-year and an end-of-year testing window.
So that is, so that's the point I was making about the compression associated with it, but then, once the tests are taken, are they sent out to aggregate those scores, or is that done internally here?
It's immediately avail, as soon as the kid hits submit, or the teacher says the test is done, the data is immediately available in that moment. And so, you know, within moments, or within a day or two, the teacher and the leaders will have a chance to look at class-wide data performance, individual kids within that, and start to make strategic decisions about how to proceed.
Okay, because I know the state tests take like six months to receive them back, and I'm like.
It's almost.
Everybody will be in high school by then.
Totally, yeah. This is all, what we're looking at tonight is all reactionary, right, processes and analysis. What's the most exciting about the new tool we're using is like, it's immediate, and we can make really strategic decisions going forward. Yeah, thank you, good question.
I have a question about, it's come up in the past, and maybe it was discussed at curriculum as well. I believe the scores for Collinswood will be presented on Monday. Is that correct, or have they already been?
The 20th.
The board meeting is on the 20th.
Not yet. So, yeah, I mean, I think we've asked in the past for an analysis of how our students are doing there. Is that something that we can plan for a future meeting?
Yep, that question was brought up a couple of days ago, and we already approved, and it came up with a timeline. Yes, of course, we need to share the data publicly first with the Collinswood community at the meeting on the 28th, but then already was in communication to share out the, we'll redo the Collinswood Secondary Report at the November Oakland Board Meeting.
Thank you. Well, it also includes Collinswood Elementary Report, because I, obviously, we want to know how our own kids are doing in the Oakland, the Oakland kids are doing in, you know, post elementary school.
But just to compare them to their peers one town over, I think it would be helpful to see the elementary results as well.
That makes sense. Sure.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. I'm going to give you a moment to switch over. We're going to do mentoring plan presentation next.
Hello again. We're back for more. Beth Ann is going to click for me, because I don't have a fancy clicker like Windsor. I am going to speak for a few moments on Collingswood and Oakland Schools' district mentoring plan for new teachers. The exciting part about what I'm sharing here tonight is that Oakland doesn't have any new teachers this year, which is actually terrific news, and that's what we, like, all are aiming for, consistency in staff retention year over year. And so the Oakland team obviously should be applauded for the work that we're doing in that regard. Nevertheless, we're still required to have a mentoring plan, so I'm going to talk for a few minutes about what that looks like and how we support all of our new staff in Oakland and Collingswood. And so that starts with, I'm showing you the first three or four slides here of how we welcome new staff in mid-August. We come together in person for a two-day new staff academy, where we try our best to front-load all of the important information that's probably swirling in the heads of folks who are new to our district and who are new to the profession, and try to get as much logistical support, information, and camaraderie at the start of their new employment with Collingswood and Oakland Schools. So they, I'm just showing you a few examples of how they were greeted. You can go to the next slide. Beth Ann, thank you. We partnered with our CEA to provide breakfast and lunch throughout the days to build in, again, not just like tactical logistical information, but the opportunity to come together and share a meal and meet their new colleagues. Here's an example of what the first morning's agenda looked like. Just pause to let you skim. This was held in the LMC at the secondary campus, and all of the district leaders and administrators and supervisors were present also on that morning to welcome and introduce themselves and connect with our new employees. And, thank you, Beth Ann. And this work is led by a team, Lauren Katz, Katie Ballaban, and Chris Taylor, who do a tremendous job with our mentoring program, both the August session that I'm referencing here, as well as the required ongoing year-long training that new teachers are supported with. And here you can see a few pictures of what that August training looked like in the LMC altogether. That is, that's it for that. I can also, if you want to go, if you want to click out Beth Ann for a second and go to that other Google Doc to the left there, thank you. This is a 30-page mentoring document that I'm certainly not going to walk us all the way through entirely, but Beth Ann, if you scroll down, you can see kind of the, and maybe have to zoom in, that Program Overview Plan section there. You can see the seven or eight different components that are included here. Again, I'm happy to share the full document here if anyone is interested, but it lays out exactly how we are both required by the state to support our new teachers in their first year, and what that exactly looks like in kind of practice and implementation in our buildings through their pairing with a mentor and the way that they are supported on an ongoing basis. And so, again, it's a hypothetical in Oakland this year, and we hope it's a hypothetical going forward as well, but I'll take any questions that you have. Yes, Denise has a question, but I think that's all for...
I have a question. I don't need the presentation, though. Excuse me. So if we did have new staff, would they be, would our staff attend a joint session with Collingswood new staff, or would they have their own session here?
We do that August session together jointly, and then the mentoring work, the ongoing day-to-day, week-to-week, would happen here in this building.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Give everyone a chance to get back to their seats. We'll move on to Section Four, Committee of the Whole. I don't know if we have any topics, but if someone would like to make a motion to go into Committee of the Whole, I guess we'll talk about that.
Second.
All right, we've moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we're now in Committee of the Whole. Does anyone have anything for Committee of the Whole at this time?
I have a question, or a request, I guess. Philadelphia Magazine this month has an article on the best schools in Philadelphia and the suburbs and New Jersey. And I haven't read the whole article, so I'm not sure everything that's in there. But, and I don't necessarily agree with their list of who the best schools are. They're using some system different than what I would use. But anyway, they did have one article, one item on a chart that made some sense to me, and that was the average tenure of the staff. And can we get that for the high school and the middle school at some point? Not tomorrow, but...
Can I also request for Oakland, too?
All staff?
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? So just reminding all, board members are, we are having a retreat on Saturday morning starting at 9:00 a.m. here in the library this week.
And next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is the School Board Conference in Atlantic City. You are registered as a board. I know it's hard for you guys to get out of work sometimes, but you are registered. There's some good PD listed. They have an app. They had an app last year, too. But they have a really good app that you can download, and you can just select your sessions and stuff like that. So just a little reminder that that's going on also.
So with regards to the retreat, because I sadly cannot be there, what kind of materials can we expect before, or, because I'd love to contribute what I may before the meeting?
So Fred and I connected about agenda today. You want to chime in on agenda items or setting the agenda? There is a board doc. It just doesn't have any information in there yet.
So Denise wants to discuss the relationship with Collingswood related to the calendar. That would be one item. A second item was the Admin Services Agreement. And then the third item is the Send/Receive Relationship with Collingswood, and then any other items that she'll be collecting from board members between, over the next several days.
And add in there, too, the Code of Conduct, too. I forgot to put that in there. Sorry. So that is something that we talked about in committee last month? I can't even remember when that was, but...
Yes.
Yeah, that is something that we should look at as well, and if board members have feedback on that. I believe there is a Google Doc that we can add information to. I'll double-check on that. One other thing, because I know it's come up a few times at board meetings, is again, the crosswalk at Newton and the White Horse Pike. So there was an article recently in NJ Penn about, I guess, like a county meeting or something where the police and local government officials discuss making improvements to that area. I'm not, and they did discuss crossing from the apartments over to CBS, but I didn't notice anything in the article, so I'm not sure if students crossing was discussed at all. But it does look like they are looking at it, at least. And it indicated that it's a slow process. But anyway, I'd like to keep bringing attention to that, because I think the idea of the lighted crosswalks is an excellent one, and I would love to see that implemented in Collingswood.
Yeah, I'm staying on that. I read the article in retrospect rather than NJ Penn. But it was basically the same thing, but I didn't see where it said lighted crosswalks. That would be a terrific idea. Also, I'm wondering who is planning all of this? The article is strictly Collingswood, but apparently it's going from Camden to Haddon Heights.
It's all down the White Horse Pike, right?
Yeah, so that whole area is going to improve. Who are they talking to in Oakland?
Great question. I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, I think I know the answer already, but, yeah. There, nobody, that, you know, won't be told what they're going to do for us. Now would be the time to get involved, to see what we can do, like moving that crosswalk from Newton Avenue to, of course, from CBS.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't, yeah. Yeah, I might have projected in the light of crosswalks. Not that I saw that suggested, just that I thought, saw that they were trying to make safety improvement, that they're focusing on the area and pedestrian safety. There are other areas in different towns where I'd love to see improvements, namely in Haddon Township, too, by a theater on the White Horse Pike. But, yeah, there's a lot of areas that they could focus on.
And I think I noted in the retrospect article that what was not included was a barrier to stop vehicles from going up on a curb. And that was noted, I think, as something that they would want to bring into it. So the way I read it, and again, did not analyze it carefully, but...
There was something about that.
That it didn't include, and they were kind of advocating for something that could stop a vehicle rather than it going straight onto the pedestrian sidewalk. Yeah.
It'd be nice if they decided that maybe we should talk to people first and then make the plan, rather than make the plan and then tell the people all the wonderful things they're going to do for us to make us safer. But, silly me.
Anyone have anything else for Committee of the Whole?
Oh, yes. This is critical. Are we going to have coffee on Saturday, or do we have to bring our own? We're going to have coffee?
Quick question while we were on the topic of crosswalks. How has the new crosswalk in front of the school been since everything's running smoothly? All right? Excellent.
For those watching at home, that was, it's good. All right, is there a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are out of Committee of the Whole. Section Five is important dates. So there is OMAAC Gym Night, the first one of the year for Oakland students. So that's fourth grade and up, so middle schoolers can attend that as well. There are some PTA events listed there. I'm not going to repeat them, because I'm sure they'll be talked about later. And our, obviously, our board retreat on Saturday, which I don't think is listed there. And then our next board meeting on November 19th. Moving on to Section Six, Routine Board Minutes. I'm sorry, business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. There's no unfinished business at this time. Section Seven is the First Public Comment Section, so this is for agenda items only. Please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. All right, hearing none. We'll move on to Section Eight and the Superintendent's Report.
Okay. Section 8.01 is the Enrollment Report, which is attached. September 2023 is 272. September 2024 is 273. And 8.02 and 8.03 is the Suspension Report for September. Excuse me, and the Safety Drill Report for September.
Thank you. Moving on to Section Nine, the Business Administrator Report.
All righty. This evening, I have, Item 9.01 is your September monthly budgetary transfers. Item 9.02 is your Board Secretary/Treasurers Report and all of the backup. 9.03 is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued during the month of October thus far. And 9.04 is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning. And that is it.
All right, thank you. Section 10, Finance Committee Report, is Jimmy.
Good evening. Today, we're looking for approval of 10.01, the approval of budget transfers, 10.02 and 10.03 for approval of certifications and expenditures. 10.04 for approval of Secretary/Treasurer Reports. 10.05 and 10.06 for the approval of purchase order and warrants. All those were described by Beth Ann a few minutes ago. The new business we have is 10.07, is 2024-2025 Annual Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. 10.08, which is kind of fun. It's the Animal Welfare Association, which is a STEM outreach program, which will allow our fourth and fifth grade students to participate in hands-on activities at various stations, including vet medicine, behavior, nutrition, and engineering. So that sounds cool. 10.09, use of facilities for the OC Panthers Basketball to use the Oakland Gym on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., beginning November 1st and ending on February 1st of 2025. That's all.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions from board members on any of those? Hearing none on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
All right, Section 11, Curriculum and Personnel Committee, is Todd.
All right, good evening, everyone. So Item 11.01, we're seeking approval to place the following students on home instruction or out-of-district placement there. Item 11.02, we're looking to approve a revised medical and maternity leave from October 8th through November 19th, followed by an unpaid maternity leave from November 20th through March 7th. The staff members expect to return March 10th. So that kind of aligns with Item 11.03, which has a revised long-term subcontract effect of October 8th through March 7th. Item 11.04, we're seeking to approve the following extracurricular stipends there for choral group sponsor, band director, and yearbook advisor. Item 11.05, we're seeking approval for the following subs and tutors. And 11.06, we're looking to approve the Oakland travel expense for October 2024. A couple of staff members attended workshop over in Haddonfield. So we're looking for approval on Items 11.01 through 11.06.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from board members? All right, hearing none on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes.
All right, Section All right, Section 12, School Community Relations and Policy Committee. Truce.
Good evening. Item 12.01 is the report from the Collingswood Board of Education. Mr. Tabey.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just some updates from Collingswood's last meeting, September meeting. I'd just like to congratulate some of the recipients of the 2023-24 Governors' Educator and Ed Service Professionals of the Year. We had Jack Mosher, who is a math teacher at Collingswood Middle School, Katie Ballaban is High School Social Studies, and Mary Ann Dougherty is an instructional assistant at Collingswood Middle School. So congratulations to them. Have a nice celebration. Also, last month prevented, or presented, the updated Code of Conduct, and in the email I sent out, there's an attachment to that presentation. Collingswood applied for a cybersecurity pilot program grant run by the FED, which will cover costs down the road as we update our network and all that stuff that Jimmy does for a living. Therapy Dogs will be visiting Collingswood Middle School as well to spend time with students. Senior Class Trip was approved for Orlando, Florida, which will take place from June 10th through June 14th. And those are the main updates from Collingswood.
Thank you. Item 12.02 is the PTA leads. On report, Ms. Rotondo.
Thank you. So Lila and I did exchange notes. They reported out on membership totals. There are 115 members. I know the forms went out last month for parents to sign up to be on the PTA. Faculty was recognized, Mr. McCarty for 25 years of service here in Oakland. Ms. Deloya and Nurse Jen Yoder were also recognized. Ms. Bolden went over a variety of dates, and I thought I was going to get to skip those, because Denise was going to cover a lot of them. She saved them for me. I'll skip the ones that already took place. The meeting, the last meeting was on October 1st. The 19th of this month, there's the Collingswood Fall Festival. Red Ribbon Week kicks off on 10/21. The PTA at the time had planned on the PTA Family Fun Night happening on 10/25, but after the minutes, it was decided, I think that's Final Friday, and that's why it does have to be postponed. More planning to come in a future date. Oakland Glow, there's signs around town saying that'll be on 10/26. The trunk-or-treat, time is pending at the moment, but that will be the day before Halloween, and then fall parties will take place on November 1st. The only other date that wasn't on our board agenda was the next PTA meeting is 12/3. Room ambassadors, I believe, were discussed and picked at the last meeting. There's a lot of work that goes into that, so thank you to the room ambassadors. And then, Lila reviewed quite a few volunteer opportunities. I'm sure that not to, kind of like inundate us all at once, as these opportunities arise, we'll get communication about them, but they include things like stocks, deliveries. I know all the kids just, they recently came home with the order forms for the pancakes, and the things later in the year, like donuts with dad, muffins with mom. So we'll be hearing throughout the year of all these opportunities, should anybody want to volunteer. And I think that's it. Then, yeah, the next one's in December.
Thank you. I'll just add that there were a ton of new families there, and it was, I guess, the first meeting of the new board as well. So it's great to see the involvement. So way to go, PTA. Item 12.04 is, oh, sorry, 12.03 is an OMAAC report from Mrs. Bushko.
So as I mentioned previously, gym nights will be starting back up again. The first one is this Friday. And so those are for students ages fourth grade and up, and you do not have to be an Oakland or Collingswood student. It's just any, any student that lives in Oakland. So if they attend homeschool or a different school, they're invited to come to those as well. And they're usually held, I believe, monthly during the cooler months. And also, the men's basketball is going strong, so I hear, on Tuesday evenings. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
And the students have to register, though, before they can show up?
They do have to register. There is a form to register for the gym nights. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Item 12.04 is a report on the Oakland Education Foundation. The Oakland Education Foundation has not met since our last meeting, but they are putting together a flyer to go home to families and to communicate out recruiting new membership and to try to rally around some of the needs of the school. So more on that at our next meeting. Item 12.05, we are seeking approval of a first reading of two policies. 8420 is the Emergency and Crisis Situations Policy Revised, and 8467 is the Firearms and Weapons Policy Revised. Item 12.06, we're seeking approval for the second reading of the following policies. 0141.1, Board Member Number and Term Sending District. 2200, Curriculum Content. 3160, Physical Examination. I believe that's for instructional staff, and then 4160 is for staff. 5337, Service Animals. 5350, Student Suicide Prevention. Item 12.07 is we are requesting approval of the abolishment of 9181 Volunteer Athletic Coaches and Co-Curricular Activity Advisors and Assistants. This was more relevant when we had higher grade levels. Item 12.08, there are no HIV reports from the previous month, so we are seeking approval for Items 12.05 through 12.08. All right, you want to ask her?
Yeah, on a...
8467, was that the one we wanted to table? Did that not get tabled in an accident? No, I did send instructions, so I just...
That's, I believe that's the one that we wanted to table, because we wanted to do the first, to review first. Right.
All right. I apologize. I did, I did send instructions. It wasn't done. I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I didn't catch it. Thank you.
I was like, wait, I think that's the other one. So there may have been another one, too. So that'll be on November. I can't remember, actually, if that's, or that's the one being abolished, the other one.
Yes, that was the only other one.
So motion to table 8467 for the first reading until November.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do I need a roll call for that?
Yes, please, a roll call.
So roll call. This is just for tabling 8467 to November.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so now going back, now seeking motion to approve Items 12.05 through 12.08.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from board members on any of those items?
Yeah, I have a question, just for some clarity, on the policy we're abolishing, the 9181. So if there are parents that were going to help out in some capacity in a volunteer sense for any type of...
Well, we have regular volunteers. That's for, like, high, that's for sports and stuff, right?
Okay, well, because it said and co-curricular activities, so I didn't, I mean, any volunteer would still have to be board-approved, correct? We're not...
Right, because most of the parent volunteers are, I mean, are, we were trying to think of a situation where it wasn't for the PTA.
Okay, I got it. All right. Yeah, I was just looking for clarity there, so thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Read more like high school.
Yeah. Gotcha.
All right, on a roll call for those.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes. All right, Section 13, Miscellaneous. 13.01 is the 2024-2025 Nursing Services Plan and Medical Emergency Response Plan. So we're seeking approval for that. And 13.02, we're seeking approval for the 2024-2025 District Professional Development and District Mentoring Plan. So is there a motion to approve 13.01 and 13.02?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions from board members? All right, hearing none on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushko?
Yes. All right, Section 14, this is our second public comment section. This is for any item that you wish to bring before the board. Just please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
All right, hearing none. Section 15, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.